Good evening and welcome to the Ashkosh Area School Board, or School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 12th, 2014. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Here.
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 I'm here.
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 Limberger?
Here.
Saginac?
Here.
We have a bar.
Here. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance and tonight we will be led by the Shapiro Girl Scout troop. Please follow them, please stand and follow them in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 We are going to present you with a certificate of appreciation for your work this evening. We have Ella Taylor, Rihanna, Emma, Madeline, Piper, Maya, Lindsay, Isabella, Sienna, Anna, Madeline, Brianna, Haley, and Charlotte. Thank you. Next, we have Board and Administrative Reports and this evening we will begin with reports of Emma and David, our two representatives from North and West High Schools.
Yes, so for the Ashkosh West presentation, we're just going to be starting off with the, I'm just going to allow this really quick. So, we're going to be starting off with Student Government Agenda. So first, we had a vote on actually doing a Shamrock Shake fundraiser for St. Patrick's Day events. So this is going to be taking place next week Friday. And I ordered 75 Shamrock shakes from McDonald's, which was quite an interesting call. And we ordered that many people, that many Shamrock shakes, so what we're going to do is we're going to just transport it for after school. When people are leaving to go to the parking lot, we're going to be selling them for fundraising, a dog for a child with disabilities that would need that. We're also getting in contact with festival, getting like green cookies and selling green gold beads. So that's something pretty cool that we're doing. As well as more forward looking, we're going to be setting up MORP, which I will talk more in depth later. We also have elections coming up and the revision of the Constitution. So, we're really looking at what can we do differently this year that would increase participation within the body. Like I said, I'm going to be getting into that a little bit more later. And as spring comes forth, like we saw from the weather Monday, the courtyard expansion that we got passed, we were actually looking at promoting it and expanding it because we opened it up to the students. However, we want to get it where we can get different clubs involved in actually like making new furniture out there. And we want to kind of get students more outside studying areas. So we're going to be looking at that when springtime comes around. There's a new position debate about the treasure position, which again, I'll talk about later. But basically, the treasure would handle finances and more budgeting, planning for different events that we're doing. Also, a promotion of social media, we have the Student Outreach Committee that will actually be enhancing the use of our social media because we already have a Facebook and Twitter, but we really want to get the organic reach out to more students. So not only will it be announced in the announcements, but they can follow up on our Facebook page and Twitter. We also had a blood drive. This was very successful. We got 103 pints of blood and our ongoing partnership that Wes is proud of with the actual blood drive. And the Student Outreach Committee's marketing was fabulous. They, big thanks to Courtney and Charity Labaye, they actually made a plentiful posters, just posters around the school. So, we definitely increased our pints because of that. Like I said, MORP, it's just proms all backwards. It's fresh and sophomore formal. This is organized by the student governments and Rachel Wiesenberg would be the decoration head. She is doing a fabulous job and we're looking at how, we want to spend a lot more money this year on MORP, just to really, really make it something that we can promote and again, increase participation. Elections, we have elections, but we're going to be doing things a little bit differently this year. We're going to be utilizing Google Forms because it would be saving a lot of time and paper if we did this. And we discussed a lot about it and it's secure because what we're doing is we're going to have freshmen, sophomore, juniors, and I don't think seniors would vote. But we send out the whole form and specifically to the freshmen, we have the officers and the freshman senators. So that gets sent to them. And they cannot double the name because we have a list. And if we see a dual voting, then we can just highlight and just throw up the vote then. So it's very secure and we're looking at going forth through this this year. Also, the treasure position debate, we've listed pros and cons. We have addressed maybe expanding the secretary's position within student government. But again, next month, I'll keep you updated on that. Now, elections, since they're coming up, a lot of campaigning is starting to begin with posters and other materials coming out soon. I'm a junior, so elections will be something I'll have to look forward to. But also, we have the new academic lab. It's now situated in the O Room. And what this does is it's a more easy access for students. They can go down there and it's much quieter and much larger. As you can see, a beautiful picture of the O Room table right there, much larger than the library. Costa Rica, Nicaragua trip. These students will be leaving Monday after the school ends. There, something unique that they're doing is helping Nicaraguan children. So, as well as learning the language, they get to actually participate in helping foreign affairs, like raising money. They will be staying with a Nicaraguan family, which is very, very cool because again, not only will they be utilizing Spanish language, but communicating the tradition of a Nicaraguan family. Badger Boys State and Girls State. Chris Leitner and myself will be going as the boys. Emma Stark and Nicole Adrian will be going as the girls. And this is a very prestigious thing to get into. It's basically convention to build townships with different things going on and you get to meet a lot of new people by going there. You guys may touch upon this, but just the building community through education trivia night. It's Friday, March 28th at 7:00 PM. It's located in the Ashkosh West Main Gym. It's open to all students and all adults. It costs $80 per team to the Ashkosh Area School District Education Foundation and it's something that we hope to really promote. The Spring Play. It's directed by Mr. Phelps, a new spring play came out called Stage Door. It's a serious tone play with comedic events. And a little synopsis of this, it's a group of actresses on Broadway attempting to find jobs in New York whilst avoiding the temptation of Hollywood. I talked with a lot of my friends that are involved in this and it should be, it's going to be a very, very well put on play. I look forward to a lot of people going to go see this. Similarly to the arts, we have the State Solen and Ensemble Festival. Thirty-nine events qualified for state, including 65 students. And that's a lot of students to be going to state. So it's something that Wes is very proud of. I myself participated in it and we, and I looked around at many Wes performances and they were just outstanding. So it's always good to hear for that. And that about wraps it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Emma?
Keep mine a little short and sweet tonight. Some highlights from our past month. Congratulations to all the band, choir, and orchestra students advancing onto their state sol ensemble. We did actually have quite a few that will be participating. I was going to list all their names, but it probably would have taken a couple slides. So, we had Sasquatch Days last month, which was a huge, huge success. Because it was during the Olympic Games, Sasquatch, as you can see, the hairy monster, ran into our gym for our pep rally, holding a torch and then like lit the fake fire, you know, for the Olympics. And there was a student basketball game, which I got to participate in. And it was honestly, the greatest high school experience I think I've ever had up until that day. And I did score three pointer too. So, nice for someone who can't play basketball. It was pretty cool. We had Spirit Week all throughout, events throughout the week. It was just a really great success. And then the dance was a lot of fun as well. The prom closet is kicking off at North. It's, there's been a couple days after school where Laura Benish, who is actually in charge of it, she puts all these out. There's changing rooms. Girls can go in, try on dresses, see what they like, see what they don't like. And then it's all free. They have shoes, earrings, anything for our prom, which will be April 12th. We have some events coming up. Spring sports, track start Monday. I know softball starts next Monday. Boys tennis is a little down the road. And girls soccer will be on Monday as well. So good luck to all those athletes competing this season. March 20th will be our winter sports award from 6 to 8 in North Auditorium. And March 23rd, Ernesto, I would butcher his last name if I even tried, will be coming to North as a part of our multicultural week. So we'll actually be having a shortened schedule, the 23rd, which is on Monday. And then he'll come in and perform for us. And he was, I believe he was at our school last year and he was quite the comedian. And so then the 23rd through the 28th is multicultural week, which is put on by the ELL department, which is always fun. You can go in, listen to presentations of all of our foreign exchange students that come in. And they talk about their home and like the difference between here and there. Those are actually really interesting as well. And the 25th and the 27th of March are all city choral festivals. So it's when the higher choral gets together with the eighth graders and then our Spartan choir gets together with the seventh graders from, in the district. And then they all perform a concert together, which is pretty cool. And that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, next is our superintendent's report.
During this past two week period since our last presentation with the board, lots of good things continued to happen. First is the good news from Emeline Cook for third graders. We had our mayor, Mayor Burke Tower, came to visit Emeline Cook's third grade class to talk about his duties, job and duties and leading city government. The Ashkosh Gallery Walk occurred on March 1st. For those of us who were out on the street that evening, moving to the gallery, I think we picked about the coldest night of the year with wind. But over 50 pieces of art were on display during the Ashkosh Gallery Walk on Saturday, March 1st to celebrate Youth Art Month. Ashkosh K-12 art, including student photography, drawings, paintings, sculptures, and collage were displayed throughout the month of March at Art Space Collective and at a number of local businesses. ALP's students have a global opportunity. ALP students, ALP programs, students had participated in the question and answer session regarding Middle East culture with Jeremy Jewitt and his wife Kristen Holte. Jeremy is a cultural affairs officer in the US Embassy in Abu Dhabi in United Arab Emirates. Thank you for Catherine Stephanie and David Last for their help in setting up this global opportunity taking place from the Merrill Building to all the way to Abu Dhabi. The link, if you want to have a recording of it, you may look at it, is listed for discovering what international connections we've had. National History Day competition. Carl Trager, Merrill, Webster Stanley Middle School students from grade six through eighth traveled through Madison for the regional competition for the National History Day on Saturday, March 8th to present their projects. A large number of students participated in the projects. Webster Stanley Middle School received an unofficial award for the most spirited parent group. Transportation today. Wes student along with teacher Mark Michelle were featured in publication of Transportation Today, which is a publication of both the Transportation Department for the State of Wisconsin along with Business and Industry. It's an exciting step to talk about the instruments and what's happening with transportation issues. And again, our tech ed department connecting with the greater community. Oklawn students decorate and celebrate. The Oklawn students celebrate Reed across America from March 3rd to the 7th with a variety of activities. Students and staff decorated doors inspired by their favorite Dr. Seuss books. A contest was held for the most popular door. And Mrs. Retschla's first grade class won the Lorax inspired door pictured above. You can see that. On Monday, March 3rd, volunteers from Four Imprint, Oklawn's community partner, read Dr. Seuss's books to the classrooms at Oklawn. All week long, as Dr. Seuss themed Spirit Week was held as well, students enjoyed dressing up as their favorite Dr. Seuss characters, wearing Dr. Seuss's colors, having Wacky Hair Day, Ashkosh North Spartan Day, and Oklawn Spirit Day. Merrill Middle School, students prepare for summer learning. Celia Lor and Kia Thor are recipients of the Department of Public Instruction's grant for St. Norbert College Summer 2014 Pre-College Language and Leadership Program, which awarded them the opportunity to study with students from around the world for four weeks, all expenses paid. Don Schumah, Merrill ELL teacher, and students are thrilled. The students will participate in level appropriate ESL study for four hours every day, in addition to four hours of homework. They will live on campus with counselors and learn how to prepare for college and participate in those fun activities. Congratulations and we're certainly proud of those two students, those three students for their efforts. The Herb Kohl Award recipients were announced. The Herb Kohl Education Foundation scholarships and fellowship programs were announced for 2014. Herb Kohl Foundation awards for students and teachers are as follows. Congratulations to the recipients. Ashkosh West High School senior, Daphne Thompson. Ashkosh West High School teacher, Trent Scott. Webster Stanley Elementary School teacher, Kelsey Günther. The $1,000 awards are being made to 100 teachers, their schools, and 187 graduating high school students. Teacher fellowships recipients are chosen for their superior ability to inspire and the love of learning in their students, their ability to motivate others, and for their leadership and service within and outside the classroom. So congratulations to each of our teachers and our outstanding students. And should be noted that Daphne I had a chance to meet with last week as part of her journalism effort in preparing for a story in the North, in the West High School newspaper. And Daphne is on her way to Harvard University as a student next year. Jacob Shapiro news. On March 1st, Diane Patterson and Jennifer Flora received the Inclusion Partnership Awards, which are presented annually at the Seeds of Inclusion Conference held at the University of Wisconsin Ashkosh. Susan Frankel-Huffman wrote, "Your kindergarten classroom provides an amazing inclusive experience for the students and their families and a great job in modeling inclusion partnership should look like." Congratulations. And congratulations to the Student Council of Jacob Shapiro Brain-Based Instructional Laboratory School. They profited, profited a little over $500 and the assistance of the PTA in planning and purchasing Apple TVs for Shapiro classrooms. Big thank you to Bethany Anderson for leading this group. Way to go, team. More from Jacob Shapiro good news. On February 27th, The Barber of Seville was presented at the Jacob Shapiro Brain-Based Instructional Laboratory School. Thank you for Kristi Hutchinson, SOAR Committee, Ashkosh Area Community Foundation, and Jacob Shapiro PTO for their extra effort and financial contributions in making this event possible. The performance was enjoyed by all in attendance, as evidenced by student, staff, and family faces and the positive comments that were shared. Tipler Middle School, committing to excellence. Nan Contral, literacy teacher at Perry Tipler Middle School, has been awarded the Wisconsin Association of Colleges Teacher Education Award. This award is presented to an outstanding educator who has demonstrated a sustained pattern of mentoring, pre-service education for at least five years. The award recipient is selected based on attributes such as the ability to model professional responsibility, evidentiary assessment, effective classroom management, and the ability to mentor candidates in developing their candidacy to be a leader, and the ability to nurture candidates as they face a wide range of issues. Congratulations. Some Dog Champions of Oakwood Elementary. Some Dog is a free educational website that provides games and motivates students to practice math and reading, while the teacher has full control over what they learn and the students have fun. Mr. Schiegel's fourth grade class first out of, was first out of 524 schools from over 34 states. We are very proud of our mathematicians. Child Development Days. Child Development Days were held last week at the rec department. There were 208 children, ages two and a half to three and a half screen during the four day annual event. Parents enjoyed the family fair. Poems to be published in Teen Link Magazine. Again, our writers continue to get their entries into this publication. Ashkosh North Junior, Amy Holiday, had her poem, "Raining Nights", published in the March issue of Teen Link Magazine. Teen Link Magazine is sponsored by the Young Authors Foundation and reaches millions of teens nationwide. In order to publish in Teen Link, students must complete, compete against students, not only from the United States, but internationally. Holiday's poem can be found at the following link that's listed on the site. Holiday submitted the poem as a student in Christine Harches' creative writing last, class last semester. Additionally, former North graduate and creative writing student Jessica Drexler had a poem published in the March issue. Drexler's poem, Bones, examines the skeletons in our closets and how human nature tends to keep those skeletons hidden. Drexler's poem can also be found on the cited website. The OSD Teacher Contribution to Art Publication, Anne Schultz, Ashkosh Area School District art teacher at Second Chance Webster Stanley Middle School, Merrill Middle School, was published in Arts and Activities. The website is contained in the listings for having greater detail. An extra thanks to Gloria Dorsner and Hannah Dawson, who allowed their artwork to be printed. We're very fortunate to have Anne's expertise and teaching talent as part of the Ashkosh Area School District's Art Department. Congratulations to the Ashkosh School District, received the Well Workplace status designated by the Wellness Council of America, which ranks Ashkosh Schools as one of America's healthiest companies. This award is given to organizations that exhibit commitment to maximizing employee health and wellbeing. The Ashkosh Area School District received a total score of 172.94 out of a possible 180 points to receive the silver designation, which demonstrates that the workplace is supportive of employee efforts to modify health risks and improve overall health and wellbeing. Mike Knopf, Director of Human Resources, said Diane Vogel, who we will hear from later on this evening, has been a passionate advocate for the Ashkosh Area School District in this effort. Thank you to Diane for her many hours of time she spends with our district to promote wellness and we appreciate her efforts. I don't believe there's a week that goes by where I'm not reading something from Diane on the website. And with that, congratulations also to the Ashkosh West Juniors, Desiree Laurel, and sophomore Teresa Reynolds, who qualified for the WIAA State Gymnastics Meet. Desiree qualified for the uneven bars and Teresa qualified on the balance beam in uneven bars. The girls completed their, this is the past Saturday at Wisconsin Rapids High School. Lastly, you'll see the list of the last two weeks of activities that I've been participating in, which does not really include the number of presentations that the executive team and I have been presenting on informing the community on referendum. With that, completes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Are there other reports this evening? Anyone? No? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to workshops. Workshop number one, Maintenance Projects, Randy Johnston.
Family Team.
That's right.
You got the important button, didn't you?
That's right.
We're here tonight, I'm with a team from McKinstry that I work closely with. Dave Ho and myself work with them on a weekly basis, going through different projects. And there's, there's Matt McDeMuse, there's Mario, there's Nick, there's Meyer, and there's Glenn. They all hold a different role with McKinstry and work on different phases of the projects in education. We want to touch base tonight a little bit on projects we've done over the last five or six years. We did the referendum for the last five years, a six and a half million dollar referendum. Out of that project list that we put together, there's only one project that will not be completed on and that's the Shapiro HVAC projects. We're going to wait on that until we do a complete HVAC renovation at that building. All those other projects have been, will be completed among several other ones because we got some real good pricing on bidding in that. We also had a QECB loan and a QZAB loan. Each of those were for $2 million. We had projects, we did on those. And then we had the 21 and a half million dollar energy efficiency tax levy dollars. We're going to touch on those projects that will be finished this summer. Out of all these projects and millions and millions of dollars, nothing's real pretty, nothing stands out. The one thing we did do was the Oklawn School, which is a beautiful facility that we also did last year. So, just going to touch on a few of these projects that we did over the last several years.
And Randy, I would want you to just comment for our board, but certainly for the public, on the referendum that expired this year with that, you're reserving about $600,000, I believe, as I recall, that's left over for that Shapiro project. Is that correct?
Correct. We're actually spending, we will be spending that on some other projects that will be coming out. And then in the future, we'll be planning a complete boiler and HVAC plant upgrade at that because that would have been just putting a Band-Aid on to the cooling system at this time.
But 100% of that referendum dollars has been spent for its, will be spent for its intended purpose.
Yes, by the end of this year, that'll be spent.
Is that the original boiler and HVAC system in place today at Shapiro as when the building opened?
They've made some modifications to it because there used to be some in-floor heat that they abandoned. And they put a booster coil in for the preheat. But it's not the most efficient system that we have in the district.
Yeah, thank you, Randy. Again, Mario, I'm Lonzie. With McKinstry, I'm just going to be doing the clicker here, but certainly brought in a team of experts for a variety of different topics that we're going to cover. So, I promise we will make this brief. From an agenda standpoint, again, to reiterate what Stan has mentioned there, we do want to talk about the district continuing to reduce its deferred maintenance and saving energy. We're going to talk a little bit about some of the costs and how much energy we've saved to date, some of the variety of funding that they've used, as well as the energy exemption. The second half of the presentation will be around the projects that were done this past summer, that are going to be done this summer. Got some pictorials, some photos, and a couple other supplemental information. So, with that being said, we wanted to put together some sort of a performance type of review for how the district shakes out in comparison to some of the other facilities. So, we need to have Meyer here as one of our program managers, our senior program managers, going to talk a little bit about that.
Thanks, Mario. Yeah, so what we wanted to show here was how the district's been performing from an energy consumption standpoint, given the fact that a lot of these projects have an energy reduction component to them. And so, just to highlight, obviously the schools on average are about 73 years old. One of the oldest ones, Reed Elementary, in 1880 to Oklawn, which was put in last year. Right now, we're approaching about $1.5 million in total energy dollar savings since 2009, based on all these projects that you're going to be hearing about in the subsequent slides. Is that, how does that relate to energy per square foot and dollar per square foot? So you can see some of those tables to the right. The top table basically shows in 2009 where the district was at. If you take into consideration all the elementary schools, all the middle schools and the high schools, where they're at from an energy per square foot standpoint, so BTU per square foot standpoint. So as you can see, you're So as you can see, you're at about 75,000 BTUs per square foot, or 75 KBUs per square foot. And then from 2010, 2011 to now, you can see the reduction that you've been seeing as a result of these projects from an energy standpoint. The same is kind of shown on the table below, which is a cost per square foot, so your utility cost per square foot. There's differences between the two tables, just because costs obviously have a variance from a rate standpoint throughout the years, so, but you can see from 2009, starting off at about $0.95 per square foot, to now where we're about $0.70 per square foot, you can see that reduction of dollars from a utility standpoint. The baseline that you see there with that big red line is just to show kind of, on average, what we've seen typically across Wisconsin in districts where they pretty much lie as far as a dollar per square foot across their district as well. So you can kind of look at that gap between like in 2012 and 2013, where you guys are at, up to where most districts are at across the state.
And we do need to comment on the fact that in the middle of those, 2012 was the winter that almost wasn't, and that anomaly we cannot and should not take credit for as being that out of line, that very mild winter, mild winter that was there, so. And of course, we don't have the 2014 winter that doesn't want to end on there yet, so.
But if you look at 2010, 11, and 13, you get a sense of about, of a reduction that's sort of.
Yeah, it's based on a more normalized typical, typical heating and cooling year. We didn't normalize the data based on that, so obviously that's why you see some of those anomalies, but if you take, again, like Matt said, if you take 2010, 2011, 2013, that kind of shows you really what the projects are really doing from an energy savings standpoint.
Thanks, Meyer. I just wanted to talk a little bit about, and just to piggyback what Randy was mentioning, there are, there have been multiple funding sources for the variety of projects that the district has been taking on. Some have been with McKinstry, but certainly not all. We started off in the '09 timeframe with just some straight-stick performance contract projects that really drove the energy savings to really pay for those projects. A lot of the low-hanging fruit items such as lighting, building envelope, building automation, things like that. We did have some low-interest funding options that Randy mentioned to only supplement some of the payback criteria there, as well as some incentives and rebates from Focus on Energy and those types of things, so. The next was a, the maintenance referendum, obviously. That was a lengthy list of projects. I certainly didn't list them all there, but it included, you know, heating systems as well as bleachers and things like that. So I just wanted to show that it covered, you know, a variety of improvements, not just facility necessarily related, so. And then the last one that you're all familiar with is the energy exemption, which took care of all, or will be taken care of in this summer, all of the steam in the building, or in the district, except for the one, I think that we did esteem esteem, but otherwise, some roof projects, as well as some tuck pointing and building envelopes. This is just an update of the revenue limit exemption statute. Actually, I just wanted to throw that in there to make sure that you guys knew or had any questions about how that was, that project was done, so.
So my team is responsible for the implementation of the project, so we thought we'd just give you a brief overview of the current project. We call it Phase Six. The upper section is what we completed last year, and I won't read through all of them, but rather give you a little bit of a highlight. The bottom section is what we're going to be doing this year, and you can see, 2013, we did three heating upgrades, a variety of roof and building envelope improvements. Most of the building envelope was masonry restoration, tuck pointing. This year, we'll be doing three HVAC projects again, and some additional roofing and a little bit of masonry restoration. You'll notice a couple of the schools, Merrill and South Park, were doing work in both summers just because of the nature of the work. What we did last year at those two schools primarily was the roofing work associated with the masonry restoration, so that the two could be done together and complement each other. But this year, we'll be finishing out the remainder of that project totaling the $21.5 million.
Can I have you jump ahead?
We thought it would be kind of fun to give you a pictorial of some of the projects that have been completed, and the first group of slides is specifically West High School. The other boiler retrofits that we did are very similar. This one is just a bit larger than the others, so we thought we'd kind of give you a good sense for what happened. So the first slide is a picture of the existing boilers before we touched anything, so that's what they looked like before. Make note of the size of the boilers. This is when we started doing demos, so that's one of the existing boilers. You can see it was about, you know, 25, 30% along on the demolition, cutting it up in pieces, so we literally, because of the size, have to cut it in pieces in order to remove it from the boiler room. This is just showing some additional demolition. You can see one of the boilers is gone, and one of them is still there, but that's just a group of the demolition contractors doing their work. Boilers are gone. Now we're working on cleaning up the concrete pads that the new boilers sit on. You can see all the additional space as a result of getting the old equipment out. This is one of the new boilers being craned in. We actually used roof access in order to bring the boilers into the boiler room. You'll see in a few pictures that there are actually 12 of these smaller boilers that went in this way, but all were craned in, as you see. Another picture showing, looks like two of them are already set, third one is on its way through the roof hatch. And that's half the boilers, so this is just one side of the new boiler room. Again, you can see that one of the advantages is being that these boilers are modular, and there's 12 of them. Depending upon the heat load, you've got much more flexibility in terms of how you can modulate the heating system, if you will. So then Franklin is the other, the second system that we did in the summer of 2013. We just had a few pictures here of the top. The top two were an example of a classroom unit ventilator, and the one in the upper right is the two existing boilers that we took out. So then going to the lower slides, the one in the lower left is one of the new unit ventilators, and then the boiler room is in the lower right. So again, you can see the size of the equipment has changed. Each of these rooms has a lot more space that can be utilized as appropriate by the staff.
I'm assuming that on probably all these projects, but certainly on West, Boiler One cycles through and is a different boiler, so you don't end up with one boiler burning out and another boiler every week.
Correct. We call it lead leg or rotation, so yeah, you try to equalize the runtime on the boilers. Another advantage of having 12 smaller boilers rather than three really large boilers like you did have, so, yes, good point. Oakwood was the third HVAC upgrade we did this past summer. Oakwood was a bit of a unique scenario because there actually were three existing boiler rooms, and two of them had no redundancy, meaning that if that boiler went down, a portion of the building was without heat. So what we accomplished in Oakwood was to combine it all into one boiler room. The two pictures on the top, left and center, were two of the existing boilers. Upper right was one existing unit ventilator. Lower left is the one boiler room, so we basically consolidated everything into one boiler room. You now have redundancy. You'll see there's three boilers there, so that way, there is additional capacity. If one goes down, even on an extremely cold day, you've got the redundancy to be able to keep the building operational. And lower right's one of the new unit ventilators in the classroom. Roof replacements, this was just, I guess, an example or pictorial, some of the roof areas that we did this past year. One noteworthy fact that we put together, the entire district has 1.5 million square feet of roofing, that equates to 35 acres, kind of a big number to put in layman's terms. Since 2008, over 20% have been replaced, not all by our efforts. Some of it were projects that Randy has done, some of it was part of the projects that we have done. This summer, another 8% will be complete, so roughly 30% of your roofs since 2008 will now be replaced, and that's an ongoing process because of the magnitude of the square footage of roofing that you have and the longevity of roofs. That's something that you'll continue to see every year. Probably you'll be doing some roofing projects, just the nature of roofing. And this was just a snapshot of the timeline for the work this summer. We're actually receiving bids back on the HVAC work next week. We've got several of the roofing projects out for bid right now. Construction, preliminary construction, late May. What we mean by that is once we're safely out of the heating season and we can shut the boilers off, we will start demoing the boiler rooms as soon as we can. It generally is mid to late May. Construction will start as soon as school's out, and you can see the HVAC projects will be at Merrill, Webster Stanley, and Washington. Those are all steam and hot water conversions, where once we're done, the entire building will be heated by hot water. And roof replacements, we're doing at North, Merrill, and South Park. And building envelope at South Park was just some remaining tuck pointing that we weren't able to do last summer, just because of the magnitude of the project. And substantial completion will be mid-September. Depending on what Mother Nature does to us with the heating season, we can't fully commission and tweak the system until we have a good heat load, so we'll probably be behind the scenes doing commissioning, you know, into the winter months, but we'll be substantially complete by mid-September. Definitely be done, such that school can be open, obviously, when the school year starts. Oh, these were some pictures of the current projects, so to give you kind of an idea, at Merrill, upper left is one of the existing air handlers, a very old, original building air handler. Lower left is in the boiler room, a piece of equipment that provides the hot water to a portion of the building, and the steam boilers in the main boiler room, so that will all be changed, and we'll be showing you pictures next time around of what that new boiler room looks like. Webster Stanley, again, you can see the very old, original steam boilers, same thing. We'll be demoing those, putting in hot water boilers. Same thing at Washington, you have two existing steam boilers. Classrooms typically have unit ventilators, those will all be replaced with new. And the upper left is just a picture of what are called pneumatic controls. Everything will now be digital controls in these buildings, computer operated essentially, And just an example of some of the roof replacements, we have a couple of pictures there of some of the current issues that obviously will be taken care of with the re-roofing of the areas designated. And an example of what we mean by masonry restoration. You can see a couple of the pictures where brick have broken out or the grout joints have deteriorated, so basically where brick needs to be replaced, it's replaced, and the joints are redone and tuck pointed, as it's called, so that will be happening at South Park. I think you're.
Yeah, so thanks, Matt. Going to jump into, this is Glenn Bold. Glenn does a lot of our kind of added services from McKinstry, so I just asked him to talk a little bit about some of the impact that he's had outside of, you know, Matt's day-to-day type of facility projects, so.
Yeah, so, thanks. I'll be real brief, but just to touch on a few things, not everything that McKinstry has done partnering with Oshkosh has been about big projects. What we've focused on also is kind of low and no-cost and educational moments in the schools. So just a couple of quick examples. I've met with several of the energy clubs. They all have different names for one another, green clubs, energy clubs. From North High School, I've been with them and did a building tour. Smith Elementary, which, by the way, was still the most amazing one, because about 20% of their school student population is in their energy club, far exceeding any other energy club. So it was pretty cool to meet with them. We kind of took over the whole art room. And Washington and a couple other schools were, spent some time in, doing everything from just talking about things that they can do and ways that they can make a difference, not just at school, but taking it home with them as well. Some of the tools that we use when we go through and audit a building, looking for low and no-cost improvements. A couple of things we did is just from an educational standpoint, created a little training aid that went to all of the staff as to how a unit ventilator works. So on the left side, kind of depicting that, you know, the air has to come out of the top of the vent and go into the bottom. The middle picture kind of shows an existing scenario where it's probably not set up ideally. You don't want to cover the vents on the unit ventilators or place things in front of them. And then the bottom picture on the left is just a, kind of the ideal scenario where a room is pretty well set up. Another thing we've done, working with Randy and Dave, is holiday and summer shutdown checklists, and instead of printing them out and putting them in the classroom, we just have a PDF that Randy emails out to the staff, just to remember, hey, if you're having a shutdown, make sure you shut your stuff off, unplug your computer, television, et cetera. And did meet with Aaron from IT and had a great discussion around, because there's a lot of debate on, do you shut computers down, that type of thing, and with the IT infrastructure and the endpoints that you guys have, they're able to bring them back to life, even if they are shut down, and do any maintenance updates, so they said, absolutely, go ahead and shut them down. So we added that back on to this communication. Another thing that we do is, we implemented last year, so kind of, kind of the first step was get with staff and students, do some education around, building tours and education around, what do you have in your facilities and how can you make a difference? Last year, we took it up a notch and met with all of the building operators and spent time with them, and some have been in these buildings a long time, but spent time with them, just showing them, they all have digital controls now, so showing them a different way to look at their building and how to be more predictive and proactive and using this as a tool versus waiting for a call to come in, hey, I'm hot, hey, I'm cold. If you can use the tools that you have, so spent time just teaching them ways to use their system so they can scale back schedules. If it takes a building a half hour to warm up in the morning, why are we starting at two hours before school starts, that type of thing. So it's pretty eye-opening, and we found issues in every building, not intending to, but in just showing and talking through some things, we were able to go and find an issue in every one of the buildings, so. Go ahead. And then working, I'm on the, along with Steve and others, I'm on the Energy Committee as well, and this is just a sample of some of the reports that we provide, just showing year-over-year energy use. This one in particular is admin, but we have charts like this for gas and electric for all of the buildings, and we are going to work with IT to try and get this kind of information linked onto the website, so it's accessible for staff, students, or the general public. And I think that's all I have. Well, the only other thing is, ongoing, as we've been working with the district, we also work to help craft energy rules that Dave and Randy both kind of help enforce, if you will. So there are set rules as far as schedules and set points and personal appliances and that type of thing, that actually the Energy Committee currently is looking at making some modifications to that, but it's kind of a living, breathing document that will be updated as time goes on, so that's another thing that we've worked with the district on, and that's all I have.
Yeah, thanks, Glenn. Just lastly here, just wanted to, as Stan mentioned, there are a couple of projects coming down that Randy has recently committed to. I know we've got some window replacements going on at Merrill, as well as some more of the digital controls that Glenn mentioned, as well as West. And the project that we did over the exemption, not every piece of equipment, and I don't know if this is taking care of all of the rest of it, if that is accurate.
Yeah, the intent at West is to eliminate pneumatics.
Correct, so all of the exhaust fans and everything like that will all be on digital controls, so. And then lastly there, just highlighting, you know, you guys definitely continue to commit to finding money from different places and reducing that overall deferred maintenance that we don't know is out there. So hopefully that this was informative and certainly will answer any questions. So hopefully that this was informative and certainly will answer any questions.
We do have a little standing humor on the fact that they did use a slide picture that we constantly are encouraging people not to put things, school supplies and things on top of unit vents because it prevents circulation. You noticed in one of the earlier slides that the unit vent was covered, but there were empty bookshelves right next to it. It's a classic continuous humorous thing that we understand teachers and space, but the reality is those things would've been far better off on those bookshelves than necessarily on top of the vent because all of that reduces our energy efficiency over time.
It's definitely part of that continued education.
Right. So we have lots of long ways to go.
Time to send flyer out again.
There's that picture with brand-new bookshelves that are empty.
Well, good. Thanks again for having us.
Thank you.
Next, we have OASD Health and Wellness Program, Diane Vogel and Mike Mill.
I'd like to introduce Diane Vogel, if you do not know who Diane Vogel is. And Diane is a retired science teacher, I believe, out of Tipler. Is that right, Diane? Diane has been involved with the Health and Wellness Program for the last 22 years and she is currently serving as our Health and Wellness Coordinator. Diane is going to share with you tonight some of the components of the WELL Workplace Award that we received, Silver Award that we received recently. And she's also going to talk about the WELL Steps program that we have in place. And then I'm going to wrap it up with the health assessment, some of that information. And then if you have any questions, we'll go from there. So, Diane.
The WELL Workplace Award is part of the city's initiative to become a well city. And I know some of you are associated with university and the university was also granted this award. And the reason that they were especially looking at the university and us, they need 20% of the workforce in order to become a well city. And I know that we are the fourth-largest employer and I'm sure the university is right up there as well. And it's, there's only currently one well city in Wisconsin, that's Milwaukee, Racine. And there's a group called the Fox Cities, Appleton, Kimberley, Needham, and Asha. There are six of them that are working together to become well cities and then us. And they were doing a head count. The goal was to become a well city by 2014. On Monday, I got an email, they were doing a head count, they were hoping to achieve this right now in 2014, early 2014. I was hoping that I would have an email before I left tonight to see if that goal had been reached, but there hadn't, there wasn't an email. So we don't have a definitive answer as to whether we're a well city yet or not. This was about a two-and-a-half-year process of a lot of work by volunteers. The, we have two committees. We have building captains that represent each site and a steering committee. And these are all volunteers who put in a great deal of time to make this application successful. And I won't go through each benchmark, you don't want to know all the details, but it took a lot of time, a lot of documentation to fulfill the requirements of each benchmark. The only one that I would like to go through a little bit is number five because that gives a little bit of a snapshot of our program. The first one, a number five, is the physical activity. And this was something that we had been doing for 10 years and that was asking our employees to do 810 minutes of physical activity every quarter. And if they did that, then they would be, enter their name in a drawing for incentives. And we, our goal had been 40%. Now, during that 10-year period, we never quite reached 40%. We'd get up to about 38, 39%. But our doctor, who had served on the steering committee, had encouraged us, if we could only do one wellness activity and do it well, exercise would be the main one to work on. Because exercise impacts so many areas of wellness. It impacts stress, weight, blood pressure, cholesterol. So he encouraged us to emphasize that. And so we were able to use that for the physical activity intervention. The next one was eating healthy, weight management, and we have been doing Choose to Lose for a few years as well. And it was fortunate, the application year was our most successful Choose to Use, Choose to Lose year. Choose to Lose participants put in $5 if they want to be a part of the program. Each week, there's a weigh-in. They put in a dollar. If they gain a pound, they get, receive a dollar if they lose a pound. And then at the end of the six-week session, the two participants with the highest percent of weight loss receive an incentive. And that year, we had 270 employees participate. They lost a total of 1,700 pounds and 18 of our 24 sites participated. And Megan even got the Northwestern to write a little article about us. So that's always nice when we get something positive. For stress management, our experience with a district as large as this that's spread out in so many different areas, to have activities that are more site-based than activities that involve the entire district. So we have what we call mini-grants. And at the beginning of the year, when the building captains meet, we give them applications that have the guidelines and a list of suggestions and they can apply for a grant. And in this case, that has to be related to stress. And such activities as Pilates, yogas, relaxation techniques, massage therapists, these were some of the activities that grants were given to. And during the course of the application year, we granted 30 applications. We also really encourage people to take advantage of the EAP services. Tobacco use for us, fortunately, is very low. And so we, Wellness Council of Wisconsin kind of gave us a pass on this one. We have less than 3% of our employees involved in tobacco use. So they let us get by with just a five-day media blitz on the use of tobacco products. And each week, each day of the week, we had a little different topic. And we were, we felt good that we had 21 people that did ask for prescriptions for Chandix. So we hope that we reached a few people on that topic. Then the last one, the medical self-care. There are estimates about a third of the office visits are to doctors are unnecessary. And if you look at the statistics for emergency room visits, it's probably even higher than that. And we wanted to help our people make better decisions as to whether they really need to go to a doctor. Certainly, we don't want to tell people, don't go to a doctor if you're really sick. But there are situations where they could maybe do self-care instead. And WELL COA puts out an excellent book called WELL Self-Care Essentials, this handy little book. And we purchased one of these books for each one of our employees. Now, we didn't want to just hand it out and let it sit on a shelf somewhere to collect dust. So we had all the building captains meet. They divided up into small groups and we gave them a medical situation that they had to use the book to resolve. And then they came back to the large group and reported. Then they were to do the same thing when they went to their site. We don't know, it was very hard to tell if it has impacted the number of office visits, but we did find out in our last report from GHT that we have decreased in the amount of emergency room visits. We also wanted to encourage people to use the nurse lines and the facilities for first care, both Aurora and Affinity. So our industrial tech people made these little bookmarks for us. Then the next year, when we had a little bit more money, we got refrigerator magnets that are a little bit bigger and a little bit easier to follow. So that summarized what we needed to do in terms of our interventions. And so that enabled us to win the award.
And here's our little evidence and it says Wellness Council of America, WELL Workplace Silver Award 2013, Oshkosh Area School District. So there it is.
And so this year, what are we doing this year? That's the reason that I handed out the water bottles. We did the health assessment that I think Mike is going to talk a little bit about. And we didn't want the results of the health assessment to go just end when people received their report. We wanted there to be some follow-through. So if you look on your water bottle, it says, "Healthy by Choice, Not Chance." We wanted people to look at their results and make at least one goal related to their results. If their score was 100%, then their goal should be to maintain that health status. If there were some risk factors revealed by the health assessment, then we wanted them to make at least one lifestyle change that would improve their health status when we repeat the health assessment this summer. And this year, our main risk factors are prediabetes and weight issues. And so another reason for the water bottles, we're trying, we passed these out to over 500 employees with the hope that they will be better hydrated and they will avoid sugar drinks like sodas and some of the sports drinks. Also, we're trying to get people moving more and exercising and also becoming better at eating appropriate foods. And so we have made available these two books from WELL COA. At the WELL COA conference in September, we took a team this year. The author of this Way Less for Life was the keynote speaker. I wish she would change the title of this book to Eat Better for Life because this is the best book on nutrition that I've ever read. It isn't just for people that need to lose weight, it's just a better guide for eating. If you can be thin and not be eating well, then every once in a while, when I am tempted to eat something that's not appropriate, I think Dr. Ann would not appreciate that. So we have distributed many of these books to our staff. Also, this Fitness for Everyday Fitness was the keynote speaker for the previous year. Then it's short, easy-to-do activities that, again, we're encouraging our staff to take advantage of, to become more active. And we're hoping if people eat better, they're more active, will reduce the number of people that are prediabetic and resolve the weight issues. We know that weight issues, that's a whole national problem, so it's probably unlikely that we'll resolve it for sure, but if we can reduce the number, that's progress. We have some onsite activities going on. We have Zumba, Pilates, yoga. We have a relationship with the rec department that they can take a class for half price and we'll pay the other half. We have an onsite Weight Watchers group. And then we have the WELL Steps program. And that's, we're just beginning the second year of WELL Steps. And this is an online program. And there, we have gone over the activities very carefully as we start our second year to make sure that these are all in line with our results of our health assessment and also are in line with the latest trends in wellness. And so people go online and they can click on these activities at the end of each month. And as you see, some are once a year, the big point activities. Then there are month-specific activities. And then on the next page, there are repeating activities. Then at the end of the year, these will all be totaled up and this company that we are, have contracted with, does all the record-keeping. And then at the end of the year, these are all totaled up and for rewards. Now, last year, our initial year, we had close to 600 people that were signed up for the program and we've been really promoting it hard this year and we hope that we'll have an even higher percent or a number participating.
All right. I'm going to talk a little bit about the health assessment. Oshkosh Area School District has engaged in a health assessment in the summer of 2012 and the summer of 2013. And last year, we contracted with a company named Helix. And Helix specializes in doing biometric screenings. And Diane works very, very closely with them as they get organized and that sort of thing. And Diane was extremely pleased with the performance and the services that we received from Helix. As you can see, in 2013, we had over 2,250 participants, potential participants in the program. In 2012, we did employees. In 2013, we decided to do employees and spouses. So we increased, almost doubled the expectation. Of that 2,250, our overall completion rate was 97.6%, which we feel very, very good about. And as you can see there, we had 47 that didn't complete the biometric screening and only four didn't participate in what we call a telephonic conference call. And that's where they have a representative call you after you receive your results and they talk you through your results. And if there's something that needs to be brought to your attention, they bring that to your attention, they guide you with that, that diagnosis or that area problematic and go forward. As Diane alluded to, in 2013, prediabetes and weight issues were the major risk factors for us with the Oshkosh Area School District. And it was really interesting because as you can see there, 22 individuals had LDLs. And I would say LDLs are the lousy cholesterols and the HDLs are the happy cholesterols. And the LDLs were so high that they were at risk of a heart attack or stroke. So hopefully those 22 individuals are on a treatment plan and they're addressing it with diet, they're addressing it with exercise, maybe medications. But the bottom line is hopefully they're treating it and hopefully they are going to have a long, healthy life and we prevented something maybe tragic from happening. In 2012, you can see the overall completion rate was 96.5, so we actually went up a little bit. But 2012, pre-hypertension was our major risk factor. And Diane and all the building captains in the program addressed that and put a dent in that. So that's very comforting and refreshing to know that something was able to be a result of that. And our screenings for 2014 will start again in June. And I just have to say that Diane has been such a pleasure to work with. She has such a passion for health and wellness and we are so fortunate to have you, Diane, working with us and in our program. So with that, thank you.
I just had a quick question. Of the 47 that didn't participate, were you able to gather any trends or themes or reasons why or just curious?
Maybe Diane has more information. Here's what I'd like to say about that, that when Diane works, when Diane and I work together relative to those people that, you know, we set, okay, X is a deadline, maybe September 30th. We work very, very closely with every individual and we give them every opportunity because we want them to participate for their health. So with that being said, Diane, was there, I don't know if there was any theme to those 47 or anything that?
Yeah, just curious.
Yeah. And I think we should state for the record that all of this effort is to reduce district health... healthcare costs by reducing health insurance premiums paid both by employees, but most of all, by the district. The biggest lead curve on our inability to control costs relate to health insurance costs on an annual basis. And the entire effort is a focus to work with our employees to change the trend lines regarding utilization of health insurance, and thus, of course, reduce annual premium increases.
Yeah. And to just piggyback on Mr. Mack's comment, I mean, those 22 individuals, if those 22 individuals we prevented bypasses or, you know, stents or anything like that, I mean, first of all, they're healthier, second of all, our claims are less, hopefully, it impacts our health insurance premiums, and everything is lower.
I just had one more thought, because the 172.94, I mean, that's fabulous out of 180. I mean, that's just remarkable, and that's really, really neat. But, did you gain any information on the, on the gap there in the 8.06? Like, what could be improved? I mean, I know that's already a great number, but did you gain any information in terms of what areas could be enhanced? I don't know. From the, does that make sense what I asked?
No. I'm sorry, Kelly.
Did I hear there was a score of 172.94 out of 180?
Sure.
And I'm just wondering about that 8.06, like, what did you learn from that?
That's the Wellness, the WELL Workplace?
Yeah. I didn't get that question in there, I'm sorry.
All those criterions had so many points.
And I just wondered what you learned from that, like, because it's information, I just wondered.
You mean, why we didn't score higher in a certain category?
Overall, the points, to maximize the points, I think.
It's high, don't get me wrong, it's high, but there's that 8.06, what does that mean for us? What does that look like?
Well, the only insight that I was given, we were six tenths of a point from, we got the silver, we were six hundreds of a point from the gold award. And they called me right away from, and this is done by a national panel, not the Wisconsin WELL COA. And the, one of the reps, representatives from the Wisconsin Council called me right away to explain to me that we have a hard time in the very first benchmark, because that is where you have allocation of funds. And when we started this, we were funded by WEA, we had $13,000, and I had to say what that would be per person in the district. That means $1 was spent per person in the district. We're competing with very, and she said, very few school districts get this award, because you're competing with big companies that spend 20, 30, 40, $50 per person on their wellness programs. Then, I also figured counts into that is how many people on your wellness team are paid. We're volunteers. So, those two right there, I mean, I have wonderful backing from Mr. Mack, from Mike and I have backing all through with administration, but when it comes, they don't have the ability to write in our job description that we're working on wellness, or give us big salaries. And those two things she said right there hurt you, right?
And in likelihood of being able to correct that, doesn't look like promising the future.
I just was curious about how it can inform us.
And that was, you know, that was the only, and that was the one category that we, and she wanted, was very quick to explain that to me. Thank you.
And we do get a $50,000 grant from GHT for our wellness program, that a lot of it goes back into the WELL Steps and back to our employees for their engagement and involvement.
And that's where the resources come from for the very awards and gifts.
Yes, correct. Yes.
Are there any other funds you received besides those from GHT?
I don't think so.
I know. If there are, we stole the.
There's some grants out there, let us know, we'll try.
Yeah. We would welcome them.
I don't know many of those, just curious. Thank you.
And I would just echo Mike's comments, the presence, we have, we have a constant reminder here by your presence in the building constantly about what's going on well in the district, and we're grateful for it very much. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Diane or Mike?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And congratulations on the award. We have no individually considered resolutions. Request for future agenda items? Seeing none, announcements? Anyone? All right. Motion to adjourn?
To executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I see, I request a, excuse me, I would entertain a motion to adjourn for, to executive session for considering the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the general, or excuse me, the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility under State Statute 19.851(c).
Two seconds.
Call roll.
Ayo.
Eliasen.
Hi.
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 Hi. We are adjourned at 7:19.